The Village at Marymount Town Hall. Today, we are going to go over various topics: mission, advanced directives, person-centered care, cultural competency, customer service and communication, our new sign-in AccuShield, have a quick COVID update, and then talk about the importance of licensure. Sister, do you want to get us started with a mission moment?
Certainly. I'm happy to be with you today and hope that this town hall will be productive. I've asked about doing a mission moment because I think sometimes we forget that we all live the mission every day. It's not just certain individuals who have particular jobs to do. It's not just Sister. And it's not just the fact that we're a faith-based facility. It's how we do, what we do, and how aware we are of how important each one of us is to carrying forward the mission. So I've taken a short YouTube video from the Catholic Health Association resource page of individuals living the mission, and they are actually in-person reading what the Statement of Catholic Identity for Catholic healthcare is. You will see yourselves in the individual people with their particular roles. At the end of the video, I would like you to pull out the paper that was part of your pack today, and together you'll be reading the Statement of Catholic Identity, hopefully loudly and proudly.
Thank you, Sister. Now, we'll move on to Chris and some information about advanced directives.
Thank you. One of the most important things about advanced directives is being able to know what someone wants when they are unable to make that decision. And there are several ways a person can do that so that when they cannot speak or maybe have lost that capacity to be able to tell you, you will know what they would like done with your healthcare. One of those ways is with a power of attorney for healthcare, and that document lets someone know who is to make those decisions for that individual. In most cases, two people are listed, one being the first person you would go to and then an alternate individual. A similar document would be the power of attorney for finances who would make decision for finances only. A code status is a very important document so that if you were to go into a room and someone was not breathing, you would know the appropriate action to take. Whether you're going to be starting CPR or we're going to be keeping them comfortable, it is important to notify and look in the chart and know what action to take. A living will also gives us direction, sometimes in regards to feeding tubes or what other extraordinary measures. So when someone comes into the building, we make sure that we have those advanced directives in their chart and available for all the staff to know what action to take. Person-centered care. I think we often think, okay, I know that this person, they're a Hoyer lift, or I know that they need to be transferred with two people, or I know that I need to help feed them. But knowing someone's care is a lot more than just knowing the actual tasks that need to be performed. It really is understanding how to treat somebody with compassion, empathy, respect, that responsive to their needs, their values, and how they want things to be done for them. So I think, you know, one of the best ways is to really try and get to know somebody, to learn about their background, to learn about what they would want done for themselves. So when you go into a room, have some conversation. Talk to the individual. Get to know them a little bit. Ask them. Understand what their culture is. Ask them what their background be. Tell them they want to. It makes them feel good that you want to know a little bit about them. And that really is understanding and developing that person-centered care, and that's how we all would like to be treated. Cultural competency, I think, really goes hand in hand with person-centered care. It really is the same type of understanding someone's background. We all have our own belief system. We all have been brought up in a certain type of culture. And being able to appreciate that and know what somebody is going to feel and how they're going to want to be treated is very important to us.
Thank you, Chris. Ron, do you want to talk about customer service?
Yes, thank you. And after a nearly two-and-a-half-year hiatus, I'm happy to say that the HOPE customer service program is now part of orientation. Actually, had our first one yesterday. Again, why we're doing customer service, it's vitally important to our brand, and it's vitally important that we keep not only the residents happy and their families happy, but each other happy and on task. HOPE stands for Helping Others Pursue Excellence. So the "others" includes not only residents but staff as well. We want to help staff members through scholarship programs and different types of programs that we have excel and help further their career. And conversely, we would like the residents to perform well in their therapy sessions so that they can return home and, you know, live a nice, normal life with their families. We incorporate HOPE through the deliverables of hospitality, ownership, proactivity, and engagement. And our whole bottom line here is to create a mission-based customer service culture through HOPE. Our HOPE training program was created to, again, as I mentioned, put the customer first. And in the case of customer, that can be not only the residents, but the staff members themselves. And we really wanted to put together a program of clarity of customer service expectations for everybody. We want to reinforce campus trust by having a program that is recognizable and a good quality program and provide the tools necessary to meet the customer service expectations of our residents, families, and each other. So the results of bad communication, bad reputation, poor service certainly can be devastating. Not only does it mean the loss of some good employees, and in these times, we certainly don't want that. It's really difficult to find good workers, and we really want to keep the ones we have. But it can also lead to a loss of our customer base, especially because many of our residents are repeat customers, if you will. They've been here before for a prior surgery or, you know, rehabilitation stay. Poor customer service and reputation can also hurt our company from a profitability standpoint. It can lead to empty beds because people simply don't want to be here if they don't feel they're getting great service. And of course, empty beds can lead to shift cuts and reduced hours, and certainly no one wants that. Good communication is essential to everything we do with regard to each other and our residents. Good communication can oftentimes help diffuse a conflict or a difficult situation. It helps us to understand issues and formulate better solutions to solve problems. Good communication helps to earn, build, and really enhance trust and respect, and reduce misunderstandings. Illustrates a caring attitude, which is very important from our family and resident perspective. And it certainly can reduce the recurrences of making similar mistakes over and over, which is certainly not a good thing as well. So our new Orientees are going to learn more about HOPE in the weeks to come during orientation. And if you're not out on the floors practicing good customer service, you may find yourself in one of the Tuesday training sessions. So all the best to continue with good communication, good customer service, and help us to continue living our mission and ultimately the mission of the Sisters.
Thanks, Ron. I wanted to take a minute and talk about some other things that have tie into customer service and that we've heard recently. And I want staff to think about this. And if you've ever said any of these things, have you ever said "I don't know" to a resident or another staff person, but then didn't follow up on it or just walked away and left them feeling that whatever their concern or need was, was unresolved? Or how about just the simple word of "okay," and then you walked away? Did you leave that family member or resident feeling that they didn't know what was going to happen? They didn't know if you were going to talk to somebody to get their question answered or another staff member was going to take care of it or what you were actually going to do with what they had just told you? Or starting or ending a conversation without a greeting or goodbye? This is something that one of our long-term families had just told me that they talked to a nurse and they just hung up the phone. They didn't say goodbye. So coming into a room and not saying hello and greeting somebody, that just establishes a not-so-good start with rapport with that resident or their family. How about, have you ever said "that's not my job"? We all understand that each of us has different things within our job scope, and there are truly some things that people can't do, like housekeeper can't start an IV or give medications. But maybe we need to change what we say. And instead of saying "that's not my job," saying, "let me go find so-and-so who can help with that." When we say "it's not my job," it comes across that we might not care or even that we're lazy and we're blowing off that resident or family member. How about "we don't have enough staff"? This is never okay to say. We are never staffed below state or federal requirements. Sometimes we might be below what we want to be staffed at as a facility, but no patient or family should know that. We redistribute assignments and we shuffle things as we need to, but there shouldn't be any time where our staff or families know that we may be busy and things may have started out a little chaotically. And the last reminder is saying you'll be back and not coming back. This can cause for a resident who is unsure of where they are, unsure of what they can expect. Maybe they're new to the facility, maybe they're not, but they have dementia and they forget. It can cause fear and uncertainty. It makes families and residents feel like their care needs won't be met. And that's the last thing that I know any of you guys as caregivers want to do. The next thing we're going to talk about is infection control and blood-borne pathogens. The first part of that is where are germs? Germs are everywhere. They're on dry surfaces, they're on wet surfaces, they're on medical devices that may be entering somebody's body, like an IV tubing or a catheter. You have to be a susceptible person for germs to get into the body. Somebody who may not be vaccinated or is otherwise immunocompromised. Somebody who has a way for germs to enter into their bodies, like through that IV catheter, tubes, or surgical incision. Underlying medical conditions, certain infections, diabetes, cancer, organ transplants, and many other things leave people susceptible. Some treatments increase risks of infection, like antibiotics, steroids, and certain cancer-fighting meds. Then there's the transmission, the way germs are moved to the susceptible person. This can be by contact, by touch. If you think about MRSA or VRE, spray and splashes. Coughing, sneezing creates droplets. Inhalation occurs when the germs are aerosolized from coughing or talking, and tiny particles survive in the air. Think about COVID. This is how COVID and the flu are spread. And then Sharps injuries. That can lead to infections like HIV and hepatitis B and C. So that's another way. Blood-borne pathogens. If you have an exposure, it's specific eye, mouth, mucus membrane, non-intact skin, and you have contact with blood or other potentially infectious materials, you need to report that immediately so that we can take proper steps. You may need to wash the area. You may need follow-up care with occupational health, but you need to tell somebody that you've had an exposure. What if you have a needle stick? There are things you need to do immediately. You need to wash the area with soap and water and run fluids over that area or flush the splash out of your nose, mouth, or skin with water. Irrigate your eyes should you get something in your eyes. And then again, make sure that your supervisor or HR knows so they can give you further directions. Personal protective equipment, and we're all really familiar with this, but it's specialized clothing or equipment worn by an employee for protection against infectious materials. Gloves need to fit correctly. Gowns need to fully cover your arms and torso and fit comfortably. Masks need to be over your nose and your mouth. And goggles should fit snugly over and around your eyes. Personal glasses are not a substitute for goggles because they don't have the side coverage, although there are now covers that you can get to put on your glasses on the side. Do's and don'ts of glove use. Work from clean to dirty. Limit opportunity for touch contamination. Don't touch your face or gesture PPE with contaminated gloves. Don't touch environmental surfaces unless necessary. And change your gloves during use if torn or heavily soiled in between each patient. Discard in the appropriate receptacle and never wash or reuse disposable gloves. When putting on PPE, you want to put on your gown, your mask, your goggles, and then your gloves. When removing PPE, you want to take off your gloves, your goggles, your gown, your mask, and then wash your hands immediately after. Hand washing is the most simple yet effective way to prevent infections. Cleaning your hands can prevent the spread of germs and including those that are resistant to antibiotics. You need to wash your hands for a minimum of 15 to 20 seconds. Think about singing the song "Happy Birthday" or the ABCs or some other similar song. Let's talk about TB and hepatitis B. Those are two of the most contagious and probably commonly seen things in our sector. What is TB? TB is a disease caused by germs that is spread person-to-person through the air. We do not take care of people with TB here because we do not have negative pressure rooms. We screen for TB for employees upon hire. We do a two-step skin test and then annually. And we can screen for signs and symptoms without having to do that same skin test because we are considered a low-risk facility in a low-risk area. For residents, we do the TB testing when they're admitted. What is Hep B? It's a liver infection caused by the hepatitis B virus or HBV, and it's transmitted in the blood or another body fluid from a person that's infected with it. You don't know all the time if somebody's been exposed to hepatitis B, so it is important that you protect yourself. And one of the ways you can protect yourself is by getting the three-dose series of the hepatitis B vaccine. I'm just going to take a minute and talk about COVID. Things are a little bit different from where we were the last time we had a town hall. We are in outbreak right now, so everyone needs to be aware of that. We did have two staff cases. They weren't related to each other, and they were traced to outside exposures. But COVID is still out there, and vaccinated or not, you can still get COVID. And one of the most important things we've seen is it does make a difference if you are up to date with your booster shots because the studies have shown and the research that's out there shows that after five months, there is a decline in our immunity. Think about the flu shot. That's probably no different than the flu shot, but we don't think about that because there's only a certain time of year when we see flu. COVID's a little bit different in that we can see it all year round as we have over the last two years. You are not considered up to date with the COVID vaccine unless you have, after five months from that second dose, you've gotten your booster. So that's important to know because that can affect whether or not in an exposure situation, you can continue working and testing and monitoring for symptoms versus you need to quarantine. And everyone needs to remember, our rules in healthcare are different than what's out in the community. And although you could go about your business out in the community and you might not have to quarantine, we have to follow CMS's rules and the rules that they put out for long-term care facilities and for healthcare facilities. Staff that is unvaccinated and has had a religious exemption needs to be wearing a 95s and face shields, especially since we are seeing COVID still in our building. It is very important, and you all received your sheet back, acknowledging that that's what you would be doing. And that's in addition to the testing you need to be doing. Our county, we had dipped to yellow, but now we're back up into orange, which is substantial spread. It's not the highest level, but we did see a little bit of an increase in COVID cases and especially around the Easter holiday. We'll talk about AccuShield in a couple minutes with that sign-in process. Today, which is April 26th, it's Tuesday, we did do another vaccine clinic. So many of our residents received their second boosters, and some of our staff that got their boosters very early on have received their second boosters as well. So thank you to all of you for looking out for each other, for looking out for our residents and trying to continue to keep COVID out of the building as much as we can. Chris, do you want to talk about some summer vacation cash? Did we lose Chris? Well, I'll just remind staff. If you're thinking about your summer vacation plans and you need some extra cash, we do have a referral program for nurses or STNAs. So if you refer somebody, ask Brenda in HR for details on how you can earn some extra cash. AccuShield updates. I'm going to have Dan or Chris, who's live with you, play these videos, and you can see how to sign in with AccuShield. All staff need to be signing in with this system. If there is an issue, we have not taken the paper away. You can, in fact, use the paper sign-in. Staff from Loretto is coming over to Marymount Place. Staff that's in the back of the house, like down in dietary, needs to be coming up to Marymount Place or Villa St. Joseph to sign in. All nursing staff need to be coming to the front desks and signing in. There, we will not be having paper sign-ins on the units. So everyone should be signing in through AccuShield. The Villa St. Joseph AccuShield machine does not have the scanner, and you cannot use the QR code right this very minute. We found that there was a malfunction between the scanner and our smart pad, so we are waiting for a repair and some equipment replacement from AccuShield. Chris, over at Marymount Place, and the machine there is up and running where you can both use the QR code and manually sign in. Our next step will be that we will roll this out to our vendors and to our resident families coming in. But wanted to start with staff and work through any of the bugs, like the QR code scanner not working correctly with our own staff first. I wanted to talk about licensure reminders here, too. We've had some things come up in the last year and a half. And we all need to remember, regardless of where you're licensed, whether it's as a dietitian, as a therapist, you have an STNA certificate, you're an RN or LPN, you're a social worker, you're a rec therapist, any of the things that require licensure. It is ultimately your responsibility as the person that holds that license to make sure you're accountable for whatever the rules surrounding your license are. You need to make sure that you know when it's your year to be renewing and what your requirement for CEUs are. LPN and RN, those requirements are different than our therapist's requirements, which are different than my requirements for my administrator's license. And they do, all those different bodies do do audits at times. So you need to make sure you're adhering to whatever requirement you have regarding CEUs. STNAs need to have worked enough hours to maintain their licensure. You cannot work unless you have a current license. You need to be CPR certified. That's also your responsibility. And you can't participate in a code blue if your CPR certification has lapsed. The other thing, too, and we all understand these last two years have been very, very stressful, but we have residents that we need to take care of. There are times where things may not be ideal and we have to shift around, but we need to work together. You cannot walk off the job without jeopardizing your license. And that is something that is held across all the various boards. We talked about some of these things already. I don't think, oh, one other thing I do want to say, burnout is real. Don't pick up extra shifts if you don't think you can handle it today or it's too much because we all have our point where we need a break. And although the money may be good, we do need to take that time to take a rest and recharge. And ultimately, it's your responsibility to be trained and comfortable with the type of residents you are caring for. I was an ICU nurse. That's very different than some of the things that we do in long-term care. So I needed to make sure that I did CEUs or that I trained when I first moved to long-term care. No different than if you're a long-term care nurse and you transition to a dialysis center. You need to make sure that you're trained to take care of the patients that you're going to be dealing with. At this point, we're going to stop the full session of town hall. Those of you that are not nursing employees are able to go, and we'll take a moment to do that. And then we'll continue on with the nursing department-specific. Mark, do you want to start?
Yes, absolutely. So a couple of things I wanted to mention. Some kudos to our staff. We recently heard great comments by the families. The Bell family, the Brooks family, and the Brown families have all said they were very pleased with the care they've been given here. Not to mention, our long-term families are very appreciative of you taking the care, care of their family members like they're your own. Something that most of you don't hear is that in morning meeting, we do something called shout-outs. And when we hear of the great things you do, we do pass that on, and all the managers are aware of it, and hopefully it gets back to you.
Sorry.
A couple of other things. We have two unit clerks that are starting. Many of you have already met them. Deanna Dale is working day shift, and Elaine Yurkovich is here in the evening. Deanna is the SCU desk clerk, and Elaine will be working from CCU in the evening. Their main responsibilities include making appointments and transportation arrangements and informing families and patients of those arrangements and the fees that are involved. This frees up the charge nurse to perform more nursing functions. As many of you know, if you've ever had to make appointments for our residents, it can take quite a long time. You can, you know, take 30, even 40 minutes sometimes just to make one appointment. And that was tying up the nurses a little bit too much. So hopefully, the unit clerks will help free up the nurses, especially the charge nurse on SCU. So hopefully the unit clerks will help free up the nurses, especially the charge nurse on SCU. Deanna and Elaine will also be answering the phones at the nurses, nursing stations, directing calls to the appropriate people. They will assist the admission department with patient sign-ins from admissions and acting as receptionist at the front desk at times that they're needed up there. They can help with equipment returns, answering call lights through the phone, and directing STNAs and nurses to address patient needs. They will have additional duties, but these are some of the main duties. As you all know, we talked about the mission already. It's our mission to carry out the sister's mission to value life and provide competent and compassionate care. That is something that the unit managers all talk about when interviewing potential new STNAs and nurses. We talk about the mission. All of you are here because of your compassion. That is something that we've seen in all of you and why you are employed here. But we just need to remember, the compassion part especially. Gossiping about each other, whether it's other staff or patients or families in the halls or at the nurses station, is not acting in accordance with the mission, and we do hear that on occasion, so please be mindful of that. Especially in the rooms closest to the nurses station, those residents can hear a lot of what's going on at the station. We can pause here if anyone wants to give any more examples of poor customer service and how we can change that. Safety rounds are to be done at the beginning of each shift. So as a nurse or an STNA, you want to make sure that you are laying eyes on all of your residents at the start of your shift to make sure alarms are in place, mats are in place, that all of the interventions that we have adopted for that person are in place so that we know that at the start of the shift, they are safe. Huddles, huddles are to be done right after the nurses get their report. The huddles are between the nurses and the aides. Nurses should be finding the aides to do those huddles. But if for some reason you, you were not given a huddle, it is up to the aides to seek out the nurse to find out what may have changed since the last shift they worked and what do they need to know about their assignment. A lot of that is learned from shift to shift as the nurse gives reports, report to the oncoming nurse. The managers are now huddling too. So Peggy and myself are meeting every morning with the other unit managers so that we can understand what the focus is for the day and for the shift, and so that we can share that with the rest of the staff. Toileting and check and change, focus on hygiene is to provided, is to be provided a minimum of every two hours and PRN. Can you toilet or change someone during a meal or during tray pass? The answer is yes. If a resident does need to use the bathroom or needs attention, you know, we have heard, I can't, I'm passing trays. It's more important to address that need. You can wash your hands, you can take care of what they need, and then return to what you were doing. Do patients have to wait until trays are picked up to be, to be toileted or changed? No. Basically, what we just went over there is that, you know, if someone needs to be toileted, you want to give that attention as soon as you can. If a family member were to come to the nurses station and say that their family member needed attention or needed to be toileted, if, if they come to the nurse, while they can look for the aide, please remember that nurses are able to perform that function as well. Do you shut off the call light after asking the patient what they need? Everybody knows, hopefully, that we don't turn off the call light until the need is met. So keep that in mind. The call light stays on in case you're multitasking and doing more than one thing. That's a reminder, if that light stays on, that the need has not yet been met. The cardex, remember where the cardex is kept in long-term. It is in the closet. The closet's on CCU. It's in the bathrooms down here on MCU. And it should be at all of the charting stations on SCU. If it is not, or you haven't been given one, the nurses are able to print or to show you what is on that cardex. So please make sure you're aware of that. Perennial care on un-catheterized patients should be taken care of at least once a shift and after every episode of incontinence. Perennial care for a patient who has catheter the same should be performed at least once per shift and every time the catheter is emptied. What would you do if, when you went to empty a catheter if you saw that the draw sheet was wet? And you want to make sure that you're, first of all, you're going to clean that up, you're going to change the pad. But you want to make sure that you tell the nurse, because this could mean that there's a leak in the catheter. So keeping nursing informed, remember STNAs, you are a lot of times on the front line, more so than the nurse. Emptying the Foley bag, it should be emptied no, no later than after it's half-full. Half-full is probably the best time to, to empty the Foley bag before it gets too full. You want to make sure that you have a barrier between, underneath the graduated cylinder, paper towels in case, you know, it drips, so you can catch any drips. Empty that into the commode in the bathroom, and then wipe the tip of the nozzle from the Foley with an alcohol pad. You want to make sure also that you tell the nurse, record the output, make sure you tell the nurse what the output is, and it's best to do that right away. Same with bowel movements. You want to document bowel movements, and that is important because we have a number of protocols in place if someone is not moving their bowels on a regular basis. But the nurses only know that if you are recording that. If you notice blood in stool, again, you want to make sure that you are telling your nurse that. Documentation, it is important to make sure that you finish your documentation at the time you work. You don't want to wait, you know, plan to do anything the next time you work. You want to document as you go. Notifying patients and families. If something is worth notifying a patient or family, it's worth notifying as soon as you are able to. Especially with something like a fall, you want to make sure you do that right away. Checking to see about bowel movements. So nurses and aides, you want to make sure that you know when you start your shift, when that person last had a bowel movement, for the same reason as I just went over. We have protocols in place to assist with that if necessary. When you're doing skin assessments, what do you look for? You're looking for pressure and wounds, mostly skin breakdown. If your patient has a wound, what documentation do you need to do? So there is a skin assessment. We want to make sure everyone is doing that. It's not just for a skin tear, but it is for something as simple as a skin tear. There is an assessment under the assessments for anything that you would find during a skin assessment. If your patient has a fall, but you were on break when it happened, and another nurse finds the patient, who completes the incident report? So the person who finds the, the fall is the person who is going to complete that. That is basically the person who owns that fall and wants, and is the person that will make sure that the fall report is done. If your patient has a fall and sustains a skin tear, what do you need to complete? That's the skin assessment that I just mentioned. If your patient says the aide was rough with me, what do you do? So we all know that people can perceive the way they are handled in different ways. We may not mean to, to seem like we're being rough, but the patient can sometimes see it that way. If someone says that somebody was rough with them, what you want to do is ask more questions. You also want to go to your manager, and they can also be involved. We need to find out if, how, how deep the investigation needs to go. But it's definitely something that you want to report and want to ask more questions about. Can you leave at the end of your shift because you really want to go and the next shift hasn't arrived to give report and count? So the answer to that is no. We want to make sure that the following shift is there so that we have continuity of care. If your catheterized patient needs a urinalysis, is it okay to change the Foley bag and get the sample from the new bag? We need to get a clean catch, so you're going to want to change the Foley and, and get the sample at that time. Do you check that your aides are completing your documentation? That is something that nursing is responsible for. Are you signing the shower and huddle sheets during those into your unit manager, turning those into your unit manager? The shower sheet, even if someone declines to take a shower, we still need to turn that shower sheet in. That was, I know, an issue with our last survey, and we were searching and searching for shower sheets. If someone declines to take a shower, you still want to fill out a shower sheet and make sure those go in to the unit manager. Skill charting is done every shift. Okay, and if you're working a twelve, if you're working seven A to seven P, you are expected to do skill charting twice. Okay, charge nurses will be in SCU nurses station, but will be more behind the scenes, taking care of labs, orders, and calling the docs. Again, with the unit clerks, we hope that that will free up time for charge nurses to take care of those more important things. Charge nurses will funnel back to the floor nurses, responsibility of calling docs, reporting labs, and starting and hanging IVs as necessary. Remember that it's still your patient as the nurse, so you're, you're ultimately responsible for your patient, not the charge nurse or unit manager.
Anything else, Mark?
I think that is it.
All right, we'll take a moment and just ask staff if they have any questions or things to share or good ideas. Thank you all for attending both town hall and the nursing meeting.